It is 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order the Wilmington School District's Board. If you could stand and say, "Pledge of Allegiance," and then we'll have a new slide.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Roll call, Mrs. Crom.
Mr. Curry.
Here.
Mr. Dawson.
Here.
Mrs. Foltz.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
Mrs. Oaks.
Here.
Mrs. Phillips.
Here.
Mrs. Riley. She's here.
Mrs. who?
Mrs. Riley. Mrs. Russo. Here. Mr. Schanker.
Here.
Dr. Matty.
Here.
Mr. Quat.
Here.
Mr. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Andreasey.
Here.
This group.
Here.
Mr. Bonner.
Here.
Mr. Latour.
Here.
Thank you.
Yeah, she's coming right now.
Okay. Is she walking down the hall?
She is.
Okay. Then we'll have the patrons' public comments session. I have one person signed up, Marissa Littenberg.
Would you prefer me to stay Anderson?
That's up to you.
Okay, I would go ahead.
You say where you live.
Sure, so I live at 865 O'Leary Road in Plain Grove. So my name is Marissa Littenberg. I graduated in 2017. If you don't recognize me, you might recognize my brothers who graduated a couple of years after me, and if you don't recognize those two, I can give you a long list of family members who have graduated from Wilmington and one in particular who taught. And so, being a person who has a lot of family members in Wilmington, we all have something, uncles on basketball teams, aunts on color guard, cousins in band in football, and in seventh grade, I was looking for my thing. I hadn't quite found it yet. I was searching really hard, and it came one day when the announcements came on, and it was, "Any girls interested in practicing with the high school tennis team, please come down to the auditorium to sign up." And so, I did, and it was kind of scary for a seventh grader, the idea of practicing with high schoolers, but I did it. And when I got to the entrance of the auditorium, I saw a bubbly, very talkative guy, and he signed me right up. He told me where to be, and I was there. And I started it for six years with a really great team and a really great coach, Big A. And Big A, of course, as we all know, has been a pillar of sports in Wilmington for nearly 40-plus years. If I bring up Big A, mostly everyone can say they remember him and remember teaching with him. I had a wonderful experience on the tennis team. I could stand you for hours and tell you everything that I learned from Wilmington tennis and from Big A, and then I could get a girls' outline, women, out the door who could tell you the exact same thing. And so, I'm concerned about the budget and the fact that the courts are once again being pushed off of the budget or what seems to be maybe pushed off the budget. This is something that Big A has fought for before and has come close to, and finally a few years ago, he was able to secure that, but it seems unfortunately we are in a position again where we might have to push that back, potentially at the detriment of the team. And that is something that I certainly don't want to see, and I know a lot of women who don't want to see that either. So I encourage this board to consider their priorities. Wilmington is a non-traditional sport. We are team-oriented, but at the end of the day, I got on that court and it was just me and the other opponent. We are consistently at the top when it comes to athletics and GPA. We are consistently a winning team, and we consistently bring participation. So I just ask that this board consider their priorities when they look at the budget today and consider where their priorities lie with the sports, because I respect the need for all of the sports on this, in this school, but I would hate to see, I don't want to see, and I won't allow the tennis team without at least me saying something about it being pushed aside, and I just, I think that there's a lot of people that would agree with me on that. So that is what I wanted to say. So, thank you.
Very well said.
Mr. Anderson, you mean, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you mean the courts at Westminster? Is that what you mean?
So, I understand that the school board, you know, the college has put you in a very tough position.
Oh, you're saying by their change in their...
Yeah, and I understand that there has been or there is a line to put the courts in, and I fear that that may be pushed to the side, and I would not like that.
Yeah, we went down there today to take a look.
Yeah.
We just went down there before, so we understand where you're coming from.
Thank you.
Should I make a quick comment?
Sure, sure.
I don't know if you recognize me or not, but...
I certainly do, yeah.
You probably saw me walking my dog down there and talking to Mr. Arrow.
Yep, yep.
A lot.
In the mornings, yeah, for tennis camp.
Well, let me assure you, we have no intention of ditching the tennis team.
Perfect. Well, I'm glad to hear that.
So that's...
No, that's never been...
I would be, I would be pretty fierce opponent of that, so...
Okay, yeah.
I see you guys down there.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, you know, because we, especially when Westminster was working on the six courts down there, and they're, the four, the courts that they're now using were, are in really bad shape. They weren't just, they still continue to be in really bad shape. We then had to drive to the Newcastle Country Club, which is very expensive, especially with the smaller budget that tennis has and logistics of driving girls, you know, do you get a bus? Are you allowed, are, you know, if I was a senior, would I have been allowed to drive students? There's just a lot of questions, and so I know Big A has consistently been a proponent of getting courts.
Some of it's on Westminster, too, but...
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, that situation down there is a little bit in flux from time to time. We're not always dealing with the same people.
Certainly, I know. I remember hearing stories about it.
But Jim Duff is a pretty good guy.
Yeah.
And I don't think he's gonna, but...
He's retired.
These times retiring, you know, a little fast. And we've had some issues with other people, so...
Certainly, yeah.
In the end, you guys always play, so...
We did, we did. There was always, sometimes, you know, Big A is very, was always very good about logistical things.
Certain dances aren't always the same, so...
Certainly.
We don't have any intention of demolishing the team.
Perfect. Well, we would love to have, I think Big A's goal for...
Coach Arrow is about as high, we hold him in...
Sure, certainly, certainly. And I'd love to see his life, kind of career-long dream of seeing courts on campus.
Well, it'll be a sad day when he retires.
It will be, certainly. Thank you.
You also have the ECON board that's on, aren't they on campus? Where are they, Lynn? What, the ECON board that works in combination with the community? Suzie's, my sister's on that, that is supposed to be working together with the community.
Is that a town?
Well, it's on campus, but they're also supposed to be working in combination with the community. So if you can get your name and number to me, I, it would be interesting to see if we can't work through that, that board also to maybe...
Because those courts can be, are great for just the community as well, because it's certainly do it with guidance from the president of the board and the doctor Matty, but that might be another source. Yeah, certainly. Really, whatever takes with this going.
Is it out of the business department? I'm not sure. I just know Suzie's on the board. I was, I wanted to be on that board until I got here, and now I was like, oh, okay.
I'd love to see community courts.
They are great. They're really awesome stuff, yeah, because it's a lifelong sport. I mean, Big A, you know, he's been, he's been playing it for how long? And I plan on playing it for...
Seventy years, probably.
Yeah, it's an opportunity we could take that. I'm Nancy Phillips. Okay. Certainly, I'll send me information, we'll see what we can do.
Moving on. Number three, or, no, sorry, number four. Approval of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the work session agenda.
Come on.
Second. Are there any questions on the agenda? Over the mic. There are none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So this is the work session. We do not have any voting items this evening, so if there are questions, please bring them forward, and we'll get those resolved this week, and next week's meeting should move relatively quickly then. Approval of the minutes. I gotta flip over here. For May 18th and May 25th, please review those. If you see anything, let Mrs. Crom know. If anybody has any questions on those, speak now. We met in executive session prior to the meeting for personnel. And board operations and excellence. You'll see under some of the agenda items tonight that there are projects that we are considering based on the availability of ESRS money, and we'll talk about that when we get to there. Some of those are short-term goals, some will take a little bit longer to achieve. But other than that, there isn't really a board operations report other than noting those, and I'll comment on them when we get to those. Long and short-term goals, things like the tennis thing would be a short-term thing that we have to resolve, so that will be handed over to administration to...
Where are we going?
Do some digging, yeah?
It's unfortunate.
Well, then that's a review. Yes, it is unfortunate. PSBA update. I need to pull my phone for this. Did all of you, because I'm not sure who gets the legislative updates and who doesn't, didn't or doesn't, get the update on Senate Bill 1 and the other one, which was 733, I believe? These are two of the largest bills ever proposed by Pennsylvania Senate to drain money from the public school system and to hand it over to the private school system. I've already written to Senator Vogel. It was extremely concerning. It was a few years ago, we stopped Senate Bill 1, again, same number, and it was a voucher bill. This is, this is more than that even. It's also indexing the EITC and OSTC, which is a program that allows businesses to donate their tax dollars, the tax dollars they would have paid as tax dollars, into a program that then funnels that money to private schools. And I have the list of those private schools for the last four years. I can tell you exactly who they are. A lot of the money is mainline schools out of Philadelphia, some of it is private religious schools, and it's all religious schools. It's Catholic, it's Jewish, it's whatever happens to float the boat. If you ever want to see those workbooks, I have them. I get them from Representative Sonato every year. But this is one of the biggest drains. I do want to go over this, though, because...
I have to do some data as well, you know.
Well, it came in an email, so, I mean, like, it should be at the top here, and it's a PSBA email.
...@gailkilmeyer today at 4:00.
Okay, what do you have?
I can review it for everyone.
Yes, please do.
So this was sent to superintendents because they amended the bill and they're returning for a vote, and they're real concerned. So here are some of the things. The proposed amendment to Senate Bill 1 provides a small reimbursement to school districts for charter school tuition as far as, this is per student, $250 per regular ed student, $500 per special ed student.
A regular ed student costs us $11,000. A special education student costs us $25,000 to $26,000 a year. Give you some perspective.
Year 2, $500 for regular ed, $1,000 for special ed. And year 3, $750 for regular ed, $1,500 for special ed. They have in this bill that the reimbursement remains at the year 3 level in future years. The other problem with it is that, to make matters worse, after year 3, the reimbursement remains stagnant, reducing the percentage of state reimbursement every subsequent year. So they'll just take it out of your state funding, so you won't... I usually don't talk about these issues much, but I do think with some of the things going on, if this passes, this is an increase of 25% for the EITC, OSTC, which is...
Still indexed?
25% will raise the cost of the program to over $1 billion in just five years.
Okay, in five years, it's $1 billion?
1.6 million students attending traditional. It'll take $1.6 million out of traditional revenues for public schools.
It's $3 billion in 10 years?
Yeah.
And it's $8.5 billion annually in 15 years, because it includes an automatic annual 25% increase escalator. This is no joke. People, we need calls. We need calls to Senator Vogel's office. We also need a call to Michelle Brooks, because she was the only Republican senator who voted against this legislation coming out of the Senate Education Committee. This is one of the biggest threats I've ever seen, and the only thing that's going to stop this, I feel, is because they can't get it past the governor. The governor will veto ultimately this legislation. I'm not counting on that. I want them to know that we think that this, we know, not even think, we know this is a horrendous piece of legislation. Horrible. This isn't about school choice. This is about destroying schools. What is it? 90% of the students in this state attend public schools. 90%. And, and they haven't funded those 90%. We're lucky if we get 2% or 3% increase in state funding every year. I mean, this is, this is really bad. So if you get the chance, if it passes, well...
If it becomes law.
It's not going, it just, it can. It simply can.
Then you say the senators, they're most important for us to contact Senator Brooks?
Our two are Senator Brooks, and when you do, if you do contact Senator Brooks, if you call her office, please thank her for voting no on these pieces of legislation in committee. I'm, I'm hoping that she will stay strong with this. And I think, I think she got our message in the meeting we had back in February, I believe it was.
Point line, yes.
I had pinned her down twice. First time, she ignored the question. The second time was, "Will you support your public schools?" And she has done that, and we owe her a debt of gratitude from that Senate ed. That vote was 6, 5, or 5, 4, and she was, we were only one shy of even tying it, but there's too many...
What's driving it politically, like?
It's a scam, that.
It's, yeah. I mean, it's...
It's a huge scam. Yeah, but what, what is the political policy?
Politically, I would say that Jeffrey Yass out of Philadelphia, hedge fund manager that pours millions of dollars into campaigns is driving...
So it's heavily Philadelphia-driven?
Not Philadelphia, it's his...
Mainline.
Mainline, how do they line up Philadelphia?
It's his wish to get rid of public schools, but he has this money that he puts into it. So does Betsy DeVos. Betsy has also pumped money into the state into school choice, school vouchers, anything, anything private school. They don't believe in public education. I'm a public school graduate. I'm a very proud public school graduate. As are many of us in this room, and I'll be, I won't say it, I'll be, if I'm going to let this happen.
Senator Vogel's position so far?
I don't know his position.
Not publicly stated.
I've written to him. I have not contacted the office yet, but that's coming, because the closer we get to this vote, the more the phones have to ring, and it has to be the phone ringing. I hate to tell you this, but they can't take pressure. When the phones start ringing...
Calls are much better than...
Calls are much better than letters, yes.
That's why we said...
And that's how we managed to do it the last time. Actually, we pulled Mike Terzai off the floor. That was during a PSBA conference vote, and the board president at North Allegheny went to him, because he was from North Allegheny, and she pulled him off the floor of the House and said, "This is not for this." And it just, it can, it can be done. It just takes us to call and make a difference, and that's what we have to do. What are the numbers of the bill? Bill? Okay, Senate Bill 1. One. And Senate Bill 733. 733. The one email that PSBA sent is, that has a whole lot of information in it. The legislative alert was sent on June the 6th to our WASD school emails.
Is it 43 or 83?
733. 733.
33?
Yeah, 33. All right, so if you do hear, bring, bring your notes or whatever talking points, if you talked to somebody between now and next meeting, and we will thank them appropriately. If not, we'll just move on. Policy, Mr. Dawson.
There's no report from the policy committee tonight.
All righty. Do we have, and there's nothing in the block for help, P and DOH? Yes.
So tied in with the ESRS money that you received from the federal government, ESRS 3, Josh, that's 3.9 million, am I correct? We have to, in order to receive that money, come up with our plan of mitigation based on CDC guidelines. Now, we'll be doing that and we'll be presenting it to everyone in July, the July 20th meeting. They'll, they're asking us our mitigation for universal wearing of masks. They're asking physical distancing, hand washing, the basic stuff that you've heard about, contact tracing, diagnostics, whether we help with vaccinations, those types of things. They want that in a template. If we do not do that or decide not to follow that, we could, we could, if we don't have a plan, we could forfeit $4 million. So that's certainly important to have a plan. So superintendents are still trying to fill all this out, because it just was put on us. Now, Pennsylvania has not necessarily, we usually go through the IU a lot, so we'll get more guidance from that. They, they go to them and they get it, so we have to wait on that. I would assume that much of it is what we did at the end of the year, the last nine weeks is very similar to what they would want. Now, if the CDC changes the guidelines in the middle of the year and says, "No one needs a mask, no one needs this, no one needs that," then you can change it, and you should, Josh, am I correct? They said, "Update it every six months," was that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
For the three years?
Yeah, for the, for the three years that you need. So we'll keep you updated on that. I should have more information, we'll present on that at the July 20th meeting.
So basically, if we don't come up with a plan that incorporates the safety protocols that they want, such as wearing masks in summer school in September, when we start school, that we may not get the money?
If you didn't have a plan, yes.
If they plan...
It, it's, you have to have a plan.
It's a health plan, it's a rolling health plan for the three years of the grant that you need to update every six months.
Based on CDC guidance?
Based on current CDC guidance.
So that's correct, what you're saying right now?
So currently, are you planning on having summer school...
Yeah, we would wear masks, because kids are not vaccinated, for example.
And that would be the same thing that you're anticipating for the start of the school year?
If you go by what they currently have. Now, we're thinking that may all change by the time we get to September. One of the issues with Pennsylvania is they have a big turnover in people. They have a bunch of people retire, and they don't have vampire right now to be able to do all that, so one woman that's been there is very good, she's taken over a lot of it, so hopefully we get more guidance on this soon.
So as of right now, things staying as...
As is right now, yes.
If a teacher or staff member is vaccinated, they don't have to wear a mask?
Well, no. Right now, we did the same thing. When we were in school, they still wore, everyone wore a mask with the kids there. For example, we don't have kids here. If kids were all here, then I would suggest we wear a mask. That's the, based on what we've done, but that's still up in the air with that, whether you have the teachers vaccinated or they have to wear a mask.
So as of right now, with no changes, we will start school as we end at school?
Yes, with no changes. However, we're looking for changes.
Okay.
Because the CDC has changed things, so they...
So if we made this plan, and we put that we're wearing masks, and it's changed every six months, is there a little asterisk that says, "Subject to change"?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because they said, with the CDC, you could make this plan, the CDC could say, "September 10th, no masks, no, no," you know, they could say that.
Well, just because we incorporated a plan for six months, it doesn't mean we have to maintain that plan.
No, if they change the, you just have to update it in case.
The plan is what...
Review it, I guess, is the thing.
The plan is, the CDC changes, we'll be changing too.
Correct. Everybody's in the same boat in Pennsylvania.
Well, you remember how quickly everything changed...
Sure.
Last year. Every time we thought we knew what we were doing, they changed it. That was half the confusion with parents. We'd say one thing, and then all of a sudden it would change.
We have to give this by July 30th, and we have to follow it, just so you guys know what's going on.
You said the IU is doing the...
No, I don't know. IU's been the contact so far.
So far.
We have no information from anyone yet from you. I'm just saying, I look for Mr. Kilmeyer, certainly he's been good, he will present it to us, but school just ended, so you're not necessarily getting that right away.
But if somebody is planning on, you had said summer school...
In the summer school...
Has high numbers, they're maintaining how you are.
Maintain our, yeah, with the mask is the main thing.
Moving on. Budget and finance. Mr. Schanker, any comments on any of the budget and finance items?
Finance committee did not meet since the last meeting. However, there are several new items going here tonight for discussion purposes.
All right. The investment report. One of these, I recall, there was not very much there. Yeah, three lines in the investment report. Treasurers report.
Investment report?
No, next week.
There's nothing...
Just questions, if anyone has questions on these. So I'm just going one by one. General fund payments. The food service payments. Activities fund. Financial report. Mr. Latour, would you like to review the operating statement and where we are right at this point? Where you think we might be?
Where we're at at this point, it's, we're close to where we're at last year at this time. There is still a lot of outstanding payables that'll come in after the, after June 30th, after the close of business. We're allowed to keep the books open for 60 days, and we'll be still paying payables, we're still collecting revenue. Early estimates are, we're still where we're at a couple of months ago, that we're near breaking even. It's likely that we'll end at even or a small surplus at this point. We still have probably a good two months left to go back to the post, but we'll be a lot better off than we'll be, where we imagine we would be looking at the budget. We'll be estimated to be about $816,000 at a loss at the end of the year.
Does anyone else have any observations? So 60 days is what we have till we close. And that would be August? Yeah, in August?
August 30.
August 30. Down here, credit card payments for May 2021. This is informational. We don't actually approve directly the credit card payments. Amazon payment register, same. 2122, final budget. Mr. Latour, would you explain why we have to show the two changes and what those changes are?
Yeah, the change from when we first proposed the budget back on May 18th was we had estimated or were told that our title funding was going to increase anywhere from 6% to 8%. It turned around, and our title funding got cut, probably about $40,000 total between Title 1, 2, and 4. So that change in funding led to a larger deficit from the initial projected $599,000. We're currently at 706. There were some other changes during open enrollment, where some employees switched on and off from our insurance. So to give a better, accurate number, where the budget stands right now is at 706,399. So that will be the number that we'll stay until next Tuesday, which you guys will approve for the final budget. That's a little report for 2122.
All right. Thank you. Homestead, Farmstead. Exclusion resolution. That's on our agenda every year as a budget, item budgetary transfers, same thing with that. Kelly Educational Staffing Addendum for 2122, it's just slightly different. Why are we seeing an addendum?
What we've done this is the third year in a row, we've increased the daily sub-rate that we pay through county services. A few years back, it was 80. This year for 2122, we'll be at $95, which puts us in line with the other county schools. And we have to do an addendum just to our standing contract we have to set what the daily rate will be each year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that increase is reflected in the budget column.
Just a note here, as a husband of a substitute teacher, it makes a difference. A few bucks here and there. You gotta take a job for 95 bucks, you gotta take a job for 80. A lot of real hard call. It's important that we keep up with it.
Okay, the agreement with interim health care leave is for nursing services, which probably is for special patients.
Students who need nursing, yes.
Who need nursing. Moving on then, we have the bid acceptance for repository property. Mr. Bonner, would you explain what repository property is?
Repository property is property that's been repossessed by the county for failure to pay taxes. Gone through the judicial tax sale, which is the green clear sale. And it's held by the county because nobody bid on the property. So we typically recommend that the districts approve these bids to purchase the property to get them back from the tax. Did that pass?
You passed.
It's the second time that law schools come into play.
Yes.
I missed the last line, though. Typically?
Typically.
We recommend that the school boards approve the bids, or any municipality for that matter, because we want to get them back on the tax.
Right, right. Okay.
They're just sitting idly right now.
Right. So we recommend any bid, the object acceptance.
Get it back, make them all the way home.
Yep, okay. I do remember doing that before.
I don't see it too often. Just making some notes. Okay. And then we are at academic and curriculum. Mrs. Phillips?
Good evening, everybody. We have not had an academic meeting this month, so I do not have anything to report under academics.
We do have.
I do have my bill of stuff, that's true.
A couple of fundraisers. Actually, they're fundraisers.
They're really fundraisers.
I guess it could be a.
That's right, I was going to say, they're really fundraisers, soccer is the topic. So would you like me to make a motion?
No, no, do it next week.
Right, so they're just fundraisers for soccer. We'll do that next week and do I, do you want me to mention the other two?
Yeah.
Okay. We also will be talking about the additional Title I summer school staffing and.
Can I mention something about that?
Yes, sir, I would be delighted.
So we have, Mr. Andrezi, is it up to about 110 coming in the summer program? So we have about 110 students with the majority being kindergarten students coming into kindergarten.
That's the largest number.
Thanks.
And then also the 2122 Craig Agreement will include. And that's it for academics.
Dr. Maddie, you know offhand, 110 sounds high.
It's higher than usual, Mr. Andrezi, do you want to give us a?
Absolutely higher.
Well, last year, obviously, it didn't.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's because, well, I don't, I'm speculating, of course. But it's quite a bit higher. I mean, probably our biggest numbers normally are about 80, in the 80 range. So it's high, we have a large kindergarten class coming in. And then we also, our first grade, I think there was a number of kids who needed additional help in first grade that are now going to second that group. There's a big group of students coming into that group.
So it's a large class also?
It is.
Coming into the summer school. Summer school.
In general, it is. I mean, that's, the, this past year's first grade, which is going to second, is a large class. I can take exact numbers if you want.
Mr. Andrezi, if you, if you can send it to me, then I'll distribute that out.
Sure.
The kindergarten class currently is, enrollment to come in is approximately?
85 or something like that.
Debbie.
It's between 81 and 85.
Yeah.
And what is the, what is the sweet magic number to get another teacher?
185.
Mr. Andrezi, what is the magic number?
We'll try and give her people, she'll give the best answer.
I think you look at that, you start to get above.
94, something like that, you're getting high. If you look at, you know, we've looked at other schools too. Mrs. Catriona did a whole research thing for us. And some have as many as 25, 26, and a lot, which I thought was a lot. If we get to that point, we'll come back and talk to you later.
August is 128.
Well, we're not at 100.
No, I'm not.
Yeah.
Dr. Maddie, since I see all the principals and not Mrs. Dolovich, can I ask when schedule is next set down?
Mr. Wright, I set you up, I have to say this.
She really hasn't.
It's close.
I don't know, I can't give you an exact date. I can tell you that we're working on it every single day.
Can you say before August?
I could say before school starts.
I would say before.
I would, I would very much hope.
It's pretty close.
By July, yes.
How last year do I?
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, I guess at the same time, there's, with these kindergarten kids coming in, those are typically posted the week before school starts, for elementary, elementary teachers.
Mr. Andrezi?
I have all the kids already scheduled.
But it's not posted on?
When are you telling the?
No, I mean, it's up to the superintendent.
Oh, blimey. No, I don't care, I think, I think sometime in July, we could do it.
Whenever you tell him to, I can do it.
Let's recheck it and do it in July?
Typically, it's August.
No, but we're ready to go, so we got that done, that was easy.
Yeah, but then you're going to drive expectations for the following year. So better watch.
I'm okay with July. July 15th, I'm fine. I want to wait in case there's 15 more, you hire another teacher, you have to wait.
That's a great, yeah.
Actually, numbers change up until, well, even the first week.
Not at when we did so much, but school I used to be at, you would get 20 kids additionally, just because. But we should be able to give that out pretty soon.
Are we anticipating an academic meeting in July?
Maybe July, worst case, depending on what the issue is. We may have to do something else.
Well, that makes me think of the one issue that is going to come up, which will, the comment period is over the end of June. So that's the new K-12 science standards? And they're with the State Board of Education and they're open right now for public comment.
I mean, you can go on and comment on.
Yes, you can go on, you can comment. You can also attend those meetings, I did attend when they were trying to push the Keystone X. Anyway.
They don't have blue standards allowed.
Well, the new science standards are good ones.
Pennsylvania needs to step it up a little bit.
Well, what they have is better than what they didn't have before, so.
Social studies either.
Yeah. But it's going to go K-12 and so.
Yes, we looked at.
That will close June 30th. And so if you're interested in what they are, it will probably drive some curriculum needs that's coming here.
So too much of the academic could be replaced because they help in safety.
Okay. The Curry Agreement is in here under academic and curriculum. And I see that we purchased two slots.
That's for alternative placement.
And in a way, that's kind of a good thing. It means that we don't have five or six students that need to be in that situation or.
Correct.
Or avail themselves in that.
If you ever run into a situation, schools do it all the time, they buy each other spots.
Did we use both of our spots last year?
Don't hit first, I believe we did, yes. Yes.
What happens if no other school gives you their spot, or they don't have a spot?
They usually find it because they, that's extra revenue from the Craig.
I remember we used to buy like four spots.
Yeah, I cut that back.
And then we didn't use them often. And that was a waste of money because if you don't use them, you don't get your money back.
I actually did one, and then they asked me to do, they plan ahead, so if everybody's school is two, if the gas is a little distorted, or they know how many teachers they can get. That's how they do their revenue and expense for that program. But two is relatively true, a number is in general.
Okay. Lawrence County Center and Tech Center, meeting is?
Thursday.
Thursday this week, so we will.
Come back with information.
Yep, next week.
That we got a saving plan as well.
It is, I just sent it.
Athletic and athletic facilities. Mr. Curry, do you have a report this week or are you saving one for next week or no?
We're saving our final comments for next week.
For next week?
And we have sort of a wrap-up of the seasons and of course, always a look forward to it. But I do want to make special comment about the completion finally of the trophy case up by the gymnasium. Mr. Connor, or Mr. Chaba Vazquez built that for us at his cost. Charged us something, we paid for the labor, of course. Chair McFarland and his wife, Tony, moved trophies and moved trophies and rearranged things. And it's a beautiful, beautiful trophy case up by the gymnasium. They took the two old ones. One is going across the gymnasium to the trainer's room. That will be utilized also for some more stuff, which we seem to be accumulating more and more of because we have phenomenal programs going on here. And the other trophy case will be taken down to middle school. And we'll put our principal down there in charge of getting that stuff in the building. You have your own trophy case down there, well, built on.
That'll be nice to replace what I have.
Building a legacy down there and putting that up for the kids down there. So you'll get that nice wooden one down there, I think. So.
That'll be good.
So even more, the Hound's legacy is being, continuing to be built. Quite awesome if you take 30 seconds to look at it. It's amazing. Mr. McFarland, oh, should get all the credit.
Okay, we'll look forward to the big year-end.
It won't be big, it'll be a summary.
Okay. A summary, all right, next week. We also will have a resignation to acknowledge, volunteer football coaches to approve, assistant volleyball coaches, and a volunteer volleyball coach to approve. So that was all part of the personnel discussion. Okay, so moving on to buildings, grounds, and security report. Mrs. Oaks?
We had a meeting on June 10th. Window replacement, all the outstanding items are being wrapped up. There was an issue with the end cap on the blinds as to whether they were going to be there or not. And they are, they are going to be installed. The honeywell server upgrade controls, the work has begun and is expected to wrap up by the end of July. The maintenance building, everybody saw it when they came in, that project is on schedule. There had been a delay in the color block that is part of the foundation, but that is all completed now and they're moving right along. And then all the items that we have on the agenda for next week. The baseball field upgrade and the softball, they got some stands. Did you hear yet, Josh, about anything from volunteers or work done in house? Is there any update on that or no?
I have volunteered.
Okay. We are still waiting then on the baseball field work. The softball stands and cement pads will occur over the next few months. The track repair, that is on the agenda. The track is in need of some repair work. There were three quotes and there is a quote on there to look at. Fencing, addition to the softball field and a repair of the gate on the stadium visitor side at the football stadium. And there's also a gate being installed at the baseball field.
At the baseball field to allow access for vehicles to the infield.
Right. That's on there and parking lot ceiling, we are continuing that project that we've been doing the last two summers. And that's everything on the report.
The gate on the baseball field, in case you want to know, it's being put in because the trucks that deliver the dirt and the infield dirt can't come in from the opposite end because there's too much sink water.
It's an outfield.
Yeah, it's an outfield.
Yeah, it's a target.
You also want that there for safety reasons. You guys get an ambulance and sure.
Okay.
And remember, the gap in the baseball buildings were the running of cross-country. That's why that's there. People often ask, why is there a hole always between the foul pole? Because cross-country uses that pathway.
And you had directional sign there.
The kids know where they're going.
That's all that counts.
As long as they know, we're good.
Okay.
Because you're the first one.
Personnel, Mrs. Riley?
We have not had a meeting since my report of May 25th.
All right. We do have some agenda items for next week. Does anyone have questions on any of the four agenda items in personnel? I think we explained the rescinding of a motion. We have the Certified Administrative Personnel Compensation Plan and we will have the Non-Supervisory Act 93 Compensation Plan and a full-time guidance set. Okay, moving on, transportation. We have 2122 fuel contract pricing, which ordinarily wouldn't be exciting, but actually, tonight it is because those prices look decent. I was worried about what we were going to come up with. And I know diesel's different.
We could pick up a lot of cars while we're here. I'd be happy to pay an extra 10 cents a gallon.
That was nice. Okay, new business, I have none?
I do, I have something. I would like to ask about our July schedule. There, one of our meetings is, was optional and I'd like to make a motion to remove that from our schedule.
Which one, the first one or the second one?
I think the second one was the optional one.
Usually is.
In the past.
It would be best for us to have the first one for the health and safety plan because we have to submit something. It doesn't mean you have to pass it, we have to submit something, so.
I mean, I think the second one was noted. The second meeting was noted requirement with that it was.
We don't need that for anything we can see for it, Josh. I don't see anything we need to see.
As of now.
As of now, no. We would tell you, we don't.
So that would, we put that on next, next week's?
Yeah, we can add that to next week's. Jerry may have that.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
If we remove it, then if we test to go back on, we have to re-advertise, don't we?
Well, we're not planning on having, I think there's no need to.
Yeah, we're not planning on having.
Yeah. But I, okay, if we have, if we have a motion to actually remove it from the agenda, then if we do have a need, we have to re-advertise.
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to cancel it somehow because otherwise, we end up showing up for the second meeting.
It's normally not at the previous meeting.
So you mean, wait for July?
So wait for July's meeting.
Well, we can all just make plans for them.
Wait for July's meeting?
We don't need the extra.
I prefer to anticipate it. We'll take the, take the final.
I agree, I think it's better to do this one.
One meeting.
Yeah.
If you need a meeting, for whatever reason, you can call it emergency session.
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
I can't imagine there'd be a reason to have a meeting without it being enough qualifying as an emergency.
Correct. Because remember, in August, the date is up, so there's not much time between July 20th and the first meeting in August. So you could probably submit. You could probably suffice in August, for example, hiring a teacher or something.
Or kindergarten.
Or hiring a teacher. Hiring somebody.
Yeah. All right, then we will put a motion on for this.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, that was the new business. Patrons' Public Comment Session. Did anyone sign to speak at the end of the meeting? Do you have anyone indicated? Okay. Would anyone like to speak at the end? Okay, no comments. Administrator comments, who am I going to pick on first? Mr. Quach?
Summer, I don't know much to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Foltz, I have the report, other than to say we're pretty much where we need to be in June.
Ms. Grubik?
Just continuing to plan for next year and see what our needs are, because they change daily. And also, if you haven't looked on the website lately, at the end of the year, we had met, or I had students meet, our gifted kids met with the group from the IU, the, the class, as well as the teacher that was taking care of that, and talked about the HEAT program. So there was some, a little blurb posted on there, as well as some pictures, because they were finally able to kind of put an ending on everything they had done. And hopefully, we can continue that in the, in the future. That was all grant money that Steve had gotten from the IU, and the kids really enjoyed it on both ends. So hopefully, that'll be something that we can move forward with as well.
Wonderful. Mr. Andrezi?
Summer's starting off really well. I think we ended, I thought we were going to get through without isolating any kids, but unfortunately, that was not the case. But we did overall very well this past year. Scheduling is for the most part done, unless there's a change that takes place. Kids are in, I have kids all assigned to classrooms. That can change a little bit, too, depending on things change. Right now, I'm working on all the Title I E-grants, I'm working on the E-grants right now, and school-wide plan. Hopefully, I'll be bringing you part of that plan probably in either July or August to go over some of the goals.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wright?
Just like Mr. Andrezi said, I think, all things considered, what everyone had to go through this year, the year went as well as it could have gone. I just want to thank everybody that helped in the planning, the execution, coordination of commencement. That was definitely a much different experience, and a lot more planning than usual. So I just want to thank everybody that assisted with that. That's all I have to say for this meeting.
I do want to say I regret not being able to attend commencement. I had planned on being there on June 3rd, but my one and only blood relative nephew was graduating from high school on June 4th, and it just didn't work out right. So I was at my alma mater that night, and I was very proud of him. So just wanted to say a few compliments, if I'm not. But I did, I did watch on, I watched some of the pictures on YouTube and some of that, and it's great. And then parents giving kids hugs and stuff like that. Things that everybody does for graduation.
And I assume that of chair at the end of the year, it's appropriate to thank you folks, and I'm not doing this on my own, but we've said it a number of times throughout the year, this has been quite extraordinary. The four of you sitting here are surely essential to getting where we got to.
You beat me to it. Very much so, thank you, because if you weren't the great leaders that you are, I think the rest of the staff would have had a hard time getting through. So thank you for giving them the pat on the back they needed, and hopefully, they pet, pet you on the back and kept, kept you going. But it was a year that I know I would have, I really wondered myself how I might have even gotten through it, so. You're amazing, and thank you for helping, helping your buildings and your people, and then your students and your parents, and really, the community to get through it. Did an amazing job.
Well, we lost almost 600,000 Americans to COVID so far, but no one kid from Wilmington. So we'll take that. We didn't lose a teacher, we didn't lose a staff member. There are 600,000 other Americans that didn't make it, so. Thank you for your handling of the year. Appreciate that.
And Dr. Maddie? And Lynn, and Josh, and.
I think everybody worked as hard as they could.
I think we did.
And as I told the staff at the end of the year, you know, hopefully, we don't have to do this for another 100 years. I think everybody would like that. So we'll continue, it seems like we're doing well, and we'll keep everybody updated and go for it. Okay?
And that's a good way to end.
Yes.
So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the adjournment? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye, and may leave.
Aye. Marissa, give me a second. That's okay. If Mike wanted to hear it quicker than I did. We had to get the Alabama Repositorial Speech.